Good morning and welcome to the Wichita City Council Meeting. I'm Laura Gail Gable with City Communications. Today is Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. Well, we wanted to start off by reminding everybody that we're going to be holding our Social Media Town Hall on the Budget this Thursday. It'll be held from 2:00 to 3:30, but don't worry if that time doesn't work for you because we're going to keep answering your questions. This is really your chance to help shape the budget process, so we encourage you to participate. And you can do that by going to Facebook, Twitter, or Nextdoor and just search under the hashtag ICTBudget18. And now here's a look at what's coming up on today's City Council Agenda. The Council will take up a matter related to alcohol consumption and public parking garages, parking lots, and parking facilities. They'll be asked to approve funding for the Housing Department's Annual Action Plan, and they'll be asked to allow staff to move forward with applying for a grant involving the North Junction Interchange. For the latest city Wichita news, we encourage you again to follow us on Facebook and Twitter, visit Wichita.gov, and keep watching City 7 right here on Cox Cable Channel 7, and you can also check out our YouTube channel. With that, I will turn things over to the Mayor and Council. Good morning.
Good morning, Laura Gail. Thank you, and welcome to all of you that have made it this morning. I also want to encourage those that are following long to participate in the Social Media Town Hall this Thursday at 2:00 PM. It's going to be on Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, and you can follow along on hashtag ICTBudget18. So tell us where your priorities are for the city's budget and ask questions about where the city's budget is going for the next fiscal year. We'll call the meeting to order, and with us this morning, we have the Reverend Debbie Garrett, the Chaplain of the Open Door Homeless Resource Center, to provide an invocation. And following that, we will do a pledge of allegiance, and we invite you to join us for both of those. Good morning.
Father God, we just thank you right now for allowing us to be here. We thank you, dear God, for our health and our strength. We ask, oh God, that you touch all every person in this room, touch our city council leaders, dear God, as they come together, oh heavenly Father, in ways to make Wichita a better place. We ask, oh God, that they remember, oh heavenly Father, the less fortunate, that we remember our police officers, oh God, as we lead. And we ask, oh heavenly Father, that we bear in mind, dear God, those that are less fortunate, those that are homeless, those that are struggling with mental illness, those, oh God, that need to know you, oh heavenly Father. We ask right now that you just touch us in a special way, meet every need, bless us, and keep us safe. Use us for your glory today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 12th, 2018. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I move that we approve those meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Our first proclamation is for Amateur Radio Field Day, and so if we have some folks here with Joe Pager, Mark Ham from the Amateur Radio Club, want to join me? Good morning. We have a proclamation for you. The proclamation from the city of Wichita, Kansas, is found in 1870. Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves, and whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community service, both in emergencies and to other local organizations through the Wichita Amateur Radio Club since 1932, and whereas amateur radio provides resources to support STEM curriculum, and whereas the city of Wichita recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn Program of the National Weather Service, whereas the ARRL Amateur Radio Field Day exercise will take place on June 23rd through the 24th, 2018, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur's skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeff Longwell, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, to hereby proclaim June 23rd as Amateur Radio Field Day and call upon the people of Wichita to acknowledge the importance of amateur radio and amateur radio operators in their field day exercise, and encourage schools, businesses, media, religious institutions, civic and service organizations, and the general public to join members of the Wichita Amateur Radio Club in celebrating Amateur Radio Field Day. And would you like to share anything?
I would like to thank the Mayor and the City Council behind me here for the proclamation of Field Day. It truly is an exercise in preparedness, and it allows us to help in the event of an emergency protect the citizens of Wichita. That much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is for World Refugee Day. So if Michelle Green, the Executive Director of the International Rescue Committee, can join us, and you could have brought anybody else up. He didn't want to come up with yet. All right. The proclamation for, and I've got a couple of these for you to take back with you, reads as, "Whereas more than 22 million people worldwide have been forced out of their countries of origin and resettlement in the United States is available to only a tiny portion of the most vulnerable. And whereas Wichita community has a long history of welcoming refugees whether from Southeast Asia in the 1980s or today's refugees from wars in the Middle East or Africa and other global flashpoints. Whereas these new Americans have gone on to become productive members of our Wichita community, adding to the cultural diversity and economic well-being of our community. And whereas the International Rescue Committee, IRC, has resettled almost 1,500 refugees in the Wichita metro area since 2012, with IRC Wichita playing an important role in integrating these new Americans into our community by providing and welcoming and assistance with housing, healthcare, employment services, English classes, and intensive case management. And whereas United Nations has declared June 20th to the World Refugee Day to call attention to the plight of refugees worldwide, now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeff Longwell, Mayor of the city of Wichita, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 20th, as World Refugee Day. And the city of Wichita encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of these new Americans to the culture and economic well-being of our city." Want to share a little bit?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor Longwell, and the city of Wichita. It's a pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of refugees in Wichita and around the world. It's a very important day for refugees, and just for the world to take a moment and think about the plight of these individuals. And I want to thank Wichita in general for being such a welcoming place for refugees.
Thank you. And our last proclamation today is for Mentoring a Girl in Construction Week. So if Camille Alexander and the Magic Camp attendees want to come down, and I think Council Member Johnson would like to join this group because he just said, "I want my picture taken. They can make me look better." Good morning. So the proclamation from the city of Wichita, "Whereas women have contributed to the construction industry and continue to make strides from tradeswomen to engineers, architects to accountants, project superintendents, supervisors, and business owners to clerical support. And whereas mentoring a girl in construction program known as Magic Camp helps to promote commitment to increase the number of women choosing careers in the construction industry. And whereas young ladies aged 14 to 18 will explore and develop basic skills in the area of carpentry, aviation, transportation, and other various trade skills while learning there is room in the construction industry for their dreams too. And whereas a supportive atmosphere has been provided by the Kansas Department of Transportation, the city of Wichita Office of Community Services, the National Association of Women in Construction, WSU Tech, and local construction companies to expose young ladies to hands-on projects, field trips, and presentations. And whereas this Magic Camp has focused on developing greater self-confidence and better self-esteem for young ladies who tackle challenging projects and successfully complete them. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeff Longwell, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, to hereby proclaim June 25th through 29th, 2018, as Magic Camp Mentoring a Girl in Construction Week, and call upon citizens, parents, public and private agencies, businesses, schools, colleges, and the city to join Magic Camp coordinators in supporting efforts that increase public awareness of education and careers available to young ladies and women in construction." So which one of you would like to share?
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Hello. I am Samantha Darling, and on behalf of the Kansas Department of Transportation, I just wanted to share how excited we are to be a part of the 2018 Magic Camp. KDOT strives to work with local and state agencies whenever possible, so we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city of Wichita again this year. Like they said, Magic Camp stands for Mentoring a Girl in Construction, and we look forward to showing these ladies the careers and opportunities that wait for them in the field of construction in Kansas. Thank you.
We have an awards for the Fire Academy graduations, so we can get those folks to come up. John Hatrip, and join us. This looks like a large class. Is it about average?
It looks like a second-class class.
But I'm sure you're brightest.
Definitely, I'm the brightest.
So let me talk a little bit about the Wichita Fire Academy as we have these people joining us up here. The Wichita Fire Department held its 11th Annual Citizens' Fire Academy from April through June of this year. This academy is designed by the fire department to increase understanding of fire and emergency medical operations and to promote citizen interaction with the fire department firefighters. This academy enhanced awareness of the department's capabilities and limitations. It developed realistic expectations of response times from the point of dispatch and enhanced cooperative relationships between firefighters and the citizens of Wichita. Further participants were encouraged to become more aware of the dangers of fire and benefits of fire prevention. These students went hands-on with CPR, search and rescue, technical rescue, hazardous materials, vehicle extraction, fire extinguisher training, engine truck operation, and I want to thank everyone who took time out of their busy schedule to participate in this training, as well as Chief Snow and our excellent fire safety personnel for helping to educate and increase outreach to the community. Your dedication is why Wichita has received the top safety rating. Working together will help us continue to keep our community safe, and I will turn the presentation over to Chief Snow, obviously. I didn't know if you wanted, it's good to have you this morning.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Fire Chief Timothy Snow. Just want to say a couple of words. Our department is extremely excited to have 22 participants this year in the Citizens' Fire Academy. It's one of our very largest classes, and it's a great attribute to the two gentlemen that spend a significant amount of time making it a success. Like the Mayor had said or stated previously, the students have been exposed to the skillsets that the Wichita bravest must possess every day to do their job, and so they've been given some enhanced demonstrations. We've included our operations personnel, our subject matter experts, to provide the wealth of academic and also the hands-on training that these citizens have endured and encountered throughout this 12-week process. They've learned the importance of health and wellness. They've become very familiar with fire equipment and fire tools and emergency skills, and they've challenged their critical thinking processes. The strategies and tactics developed throughout their academy articulate into their professional and personal lives, and throughout the class, students were challenged to think in terms of personal safety and the safety of their firefighting team, and their teams are pretty big, 22 of them. It was the department's goal that the citizens through the experience have a better understanding of what we do, how we do it, and why we do. In other words, we gave them the inside baseball look at our department. With that, I commend and congratulate each and every one of them on their successful completion of the academy, and the department is very excited and indebted to the two young firefighters that have stepped forward to make this program such a success, and that's Lieutenant Dan Dawson and firefighter John Hatrip. So I would like to invite firefighter John Hatrip up, and he will introduce each one of the students, and that will allow myself and the Mayor to shake their hands. So, thank you.
Emily Fogg. Melody Yarnell. At this time, Melody would like to address the class.
Good morning. So I met a lot of cool firefighters in the city, but there's one crew that stands out from the rest. Today is B shift, so they're on duty down at Lincoln and Broadway at Station 2. There's these guys, and then there's everyone else. Or, to phrase it a different way, to be or not to be? That is the question. Good morning. My name is Melody Yarnell, and I represent the 2018 Citizens' Fire Academy. I stumbled across this class online last year and thought, how cool would it be to get to learn what my local fire department does in real life? Movies and TV shows portray fire and fire service all the time, and while we all know that Hollywood often abandons the realistic in favor of the sensational, we don't always know how to discern fact from fiction in topics that are unfamiliar to us. I hoped the academy would show me the practical side of the department. Well, it certainly has. This class has far exceeded my expectations coming into it. I initially thought the Citizens' Academy would consist of classroom lecture and PowerPoint presentations, and it includes those things. However, the instructors have put together so much more than that by filling the class schedule full of hands-on opportunities. We have used fire hoses, practiced search and rescue on our hands and knees, and personally operated the jaws of life on actual cars. Aside from being just plain fun, this has made the learning experience far more memorable and rich. I have learned so many things about so many topics. In fact, this is why I came back for a second year. I often felt like a sponge needing to be squeezed out so I could soak up more knowledge. Thanks to the Fire Academy, I have now been moved to action as a homeowner and recently purchased a new smoke alarm and fire extinguisher. And the best part is, I have the confidence I could actually operate said extinguisher should the need arise. I want to take this opportunity today to publicly thank those who led our class, firefighter John Hatrip, Lieutenant Stan Dawson, and Dustin Winter, and Captain Jose O'Kates. Your wealth of knowledge and obvious passion for your jobs made learning from you a delight. We appreciate and acknowledge the time commitment you gave to spend with a group of random citizens every Wednesday night. You were the face of the Wichita Fire Department to us, and you represented well. I want to extend thanks as well to some of our special speakers, Chiefs Snow, Bickel, and Bevis, Captains Jordan, McBee, and Zane, and firefighter Leong Son, plus many more who assisted the group with various demonstrations. I have never encountered another industry where everyone is so enthusiastic about coming to work. Nearly to a man, every firefighter I have met views his job as an "I get to do this" rather than "I have to go to work today." Personally, I have good days when I go home from work satisfied that I did something worthwhile, but I don't usually feel overjoyed to hop out of bed and get back to it next day. It's not just their passion that sets them apart. They really know what they are talking about. It is apparent that training is extensive. You know the phrase, "Like drinking from a fire hose"? We all got just a taste with a small hose, but those hired onto this department get the full blast. I am grateful for this thorough training, whether tactical, physical, or medical, for if I am ever trapped in a burning building or pinned by my own dashboard in a car wreck, they are the very people I want to see coming my way. I was born and raised here in Wichita and have never felt prouder of my city than I do today. While 12 weeks have in no way made me an expert on all things fire department, I find it to be time well spent. Once we finish our formal education, usually in our 20s or 30s, everyday adult life doesn't present many opportunities for learning about things outside our own circle of concern. I hope to see the Citizens' Fire Academy around for years to come, for it provides just such an opportunity. I highly recommend the class to anyone. You won't look at your home or office the same way when you're through. Thank you, Wichita Fire Department, for everything.
Madam Clerk, do you want to call the next item, please?
Janice Bradley, requirement of police to render aid to victims.
My name is Janice Bradley. I live in Midtown, District 6. I didn't realize tomorrow was World Refugee Day, declared by the UN, so I'd like to just say thank you to the city for recognizing that day, and it just seems so ironic that what the federal government, Department of Homeland Security, is doing to refugees at our border is appalling and needs to be denounced by everyone. And I ask people, we're being told that these people are deserving of this kind of treatment, ripping their children out of their arms when they come to our border seeking asylum. It has never been illegal to come and ask for asylum, and these people are escaping some of the most horrendous conditions of violence, gang violence, domestic violence. And some of these conditions are related to what our country has done as foreign policy for more than half a century. Look at Guatemala, Honduras, and El Salvador, and 95% of the people coming to our border asking for asylum are from those three countries. But even if somebody is coming into our country without papers, or what some people like to say illegally, they still do not deserve this kind of treatment. It's simply a misdemeanor, and we're just appalled, and we ask people to take the time tomorrow on World Refugee Day to call their congressman and demand an end to this separation of children from their parents. So I'll move on to the topic today, the requirement to render aid to victims. And I'm speaking in particular of the Andrew Finch shooting, July, I mean, December 28th, 2017. We all know what happened. We know that. There's a very strong prosecution going towards Tyler Barris, who obviously is a deranged individual for doing what he did and having absolutely no remorse, and this is something he did repeatedly. But we're concerned about the way the police left Andrew to die. He was shot at 6:28 PM, according to all the timelines and the DA report. But the DA report does say that finally, when a lieutenant arrives on the scene, the top officer at the time of the shooting was sergeant, the lieutenant immediately, or in some time, called for him to be taken to EMS, and they said something about how they carried him over, you know, without a stretcher, apparently. And Andrew died at 7:03 in the hospital after they attempted to help him, to save him, save his life. So that's 35 minutes. Now, there's nothing in the DA report or the timelines that I've seen in the Eagle that actually tell you when he arrived at the hospital or when he was taken to EMS. But we know there was, there's got to be a delay of 10 to 15 minutes, and that's critical. So we're appalled. We know that Mr. Rapp, the shooter, Justin Rapp, has now admitted that he didn't see a gun, although when he, in the DA report, he said, "I believe I saw a gun." He imagined he saw a gun. So we're, I said in the first speech I ever gave to the City Council, "We wish that you would settle with this family, apologize for this horrible tragedy that happened, and settle big. Don't drag this out forever." Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Robin Almer, Police Shootings.
Good morning, Robin Almer, 67207. A couple of weeks ago, I signed up to talk about police shootings, but so many things have come up since I signed up that I'm going to have to sort of skip around and talk a little bit about the June report and the Project Wichita survey that just came out yesterday. They're looking for ways to improve the city, make the city's future better, and I took this survey. It seemed to be missing a few areas that might help keep people in Wichita and stop the bleeding of our young people leaving. One of the things is that the Wichita Police Department could use a well-trained, disciplined police force who doesn't bully. disciplined police force who doesn't bully, brutalize, or kill its citizens. In 10 years, the Citizen Review Board will be a vital force in holding police accountable for misconduct. In 10 years, maybe we won't have any more city ordinances like giving tickets out for big fireworks, marijuana possession, jaywalking, and loitering. In 10 years, I hope the city would shut down all but three golf courses that are a constant drain on our tax dollars, almost $5 million annually for these golf courses. We could have a fully funded, state-of-the-art education system from, from preschool all the way up to college in 10 years, solar panels on city buildings. Hey, how about a state-of-the-art water park in McAdams Park? The Jung Report and the survey talked about communities and neighborhoods, so I think that water park in the middle of Wichita would be an excellent idea for the community and neighborhoods. We could have open city council meetings, like the county commission have sign up and speak on the same day. That way, we don't sign up a week early and have to change all of our, our notes. Mayor Longwell, last week you said you needed more info on, from staff on McAdams. I don't really understand what staff you're talking about and what other info you might need. I got an email from Mr. Metzner a couple of days ago on my, uh, his response to an email I sent him. He said that the McAdams pool had low usage. I wonder if any of you really listen to the McAdams citizens, the neighborhood? The McAdams pool was not maintained. It was not cleaned or supplied. It wasn't even staffed a lot of the times. The lawns were not mowed, pool hours were cut short, number of days that it was open was limited, and there was a deliberate attempt to sabotage city swimming pools over the years in order to put in splash pads. I wonder which of you have financial interest in splash pads or the YMCA? Uh, YMCA seems to be something, a Christian organization that the city wants to put money into, um, by giving free passes. I personally think the city has put enough money into the pockets of developers in downtown and along the K-96 area in northeast Wichita. We need to fund people, fund programs for children, improve infrastructure in older areas of town, put up solar lights in neighborhoods that are dark. In the survey conducted by WSU called for, uh, called Project Wichita, they identified neighborhoods and communities and community wellness as air, areas Wichita wants to focus on. The Jung Report emphasizes a shift from business and development over to civics and leadership to grow Wichita and stop Wichitaans from leaving. Leadership means integrity, fairness, and compassion. Based on last Tuesday's meeting, there seems to be a lack of leadership on the side of the, your side of the podium. There appears to be four of you over there who lack any understanding of synergy in a community, that, that a community can have. That synergy scared you last week. That fear caused you to show your arrogance, your need for power and control. You made, uh, you voted no against the McAdams pool to show your control. I think maybe some of you might be a little bit racist.
Ellen Oberly, helping the city with planting areas that do not require constant watering, various maintenance, and chemicals.
My name is Ellen Oberly. As a member of SOAR, I am speak, that, which is Society of Alternative Resources, I am speaking to the City Council to share ideas to make Wichita more environmentally sustainable and more economical. Specifically, I will talk about how to install plantings that need no constant watering, are low maintenance, and needs no costly synthetic chemicals. I've been organically gardening for over 20 years. I have a bachelor's in biology and a minor in botany. Most of this time, I've been a student, plus working, or lately, a teacher. I've been very busy. And now, I'm an apartment dweller with no easy access to water. I have to drag my hose through my apartment window to connect to my kitchen faucet. With these conditions, I learned real quickly which plants take much water or to how to grow them differently. Uh, the plants I've planted meeting these three criteria of needing little water, low maintenance, and no synthetic chemicals are Greek oregano, black-eyed Susans, lavender, peppermint, lemon balm, parsley, irises, and feverfew, a medicinal herb for migraines. These are the plants I've grown successfully, though additional ones can be found through online or book research. All of these plants are perennials, except parsley, which is viennial, which easily recedes, thus eliminating the need to generally replant. Low maintenance, needing at the end of spring, just taking out dead stalks and relocating the winter leaf mulch. Twice a month, minimal weeding, and for the lavender needing pruning every few, couple years. For water, and even during the over 90-degree days, which especially we've been having these last few weeks, I only have to do deep watering one time weekly and lightly water from two five-gallon bucket, water buckets the other days. I watch city workers every spring, spending hours cleaning out the flower beds and replanting. In fact, I just saw grass, grass in the roundabout planter. They didn't even plant anything otherwise. If Wichita followed my example, the city would be saving water, not depleting the Equus beds, Aquifer, and the Cheney reservoir, and, uh, lower cost. Saving time, less dollars for paying workers, and enabling workers to get more other tasks done, and no dollars for costly synthetic chemicals. From surveying farmers for a few years, I know how costly the chemicals can be. I worked for USDA. Plus, all the plants, except for the black-eyed Susans and irises, are edible, so it, citizens and the homeless could enjoy eating them as a supplement to their food. These herbs spread quickly, so plenty for everyone. Some of you know a few SOAR members, so we invite you to seek us out to learn more about our ideas from our wealth of knowledge from a diverse membership. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Doesn't appear to be any. Thank you.
Beg your pardon?
I said, no, doesn't appear to be any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
(applause) Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 13.
Any items that need to be pulled for clarification or discussion? Seeing none, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 13.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Ordinance amending Section 4.4.45 of the Code of the City of Wichita pertaining to areas exempted for alcohol consumption.
Mayor Council, John DeAngelo, Arts and Cultural Services. What's before you today is amending the Charter Ordinance 4.40, uh, which, uh, outlines general provisions for, which prohibit acts related to alcohol. Um, the amendment will allow alcohol in area parking garages in downtown, um, area. We have an event coming up, the ICT Level Up Event that will be coming up. This will allow that to occur. Promoters have requested additional areas for that exemption, including these parking areas. Um, the area that we're talking about is Central on the north, Hillside on the east, Kellogg on the south, and Seneca on the west. These would allow parking structures, and again, all of these would be coordinated with the Parking, uh, Division as far as their approvals, as well as through community event applications. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
John, I just want to clarify, just, when you list the exceptions, it still has the Hyatt Regency Wichita Hotel and Conference Center. Does that still need to be listed, since we no longer own it?
The exemption of the Hyatt...
Right.
...Regency...
Yeah, it still lists the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center as an exemption. That was when we owned it, but, uh, that's not germane to this particular parking lot, but it, just, something I noticed.
I'll go back and review that with Legal.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there anyone in the community that would like to, uh, address the Council on this agenda item? If you'd just come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Hi, guys. I'm Miko. I'm at 1628 Melrose Lane. Um, it's odd that this comes up. I think this actually is kind of relevant to the shooting of Andrew Finch that happened on December 28th. And just to go ahead and clear that up, so you guys know what I'm talking about, I'm going to reference, um, a song by the NWA that says...
You really need to be germane to the topic. I know you want to use this five minutes to ramble and share. Germane to the topic, please. Anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I would just, uh, echo what Council Vice Mayor mentioned in terms of making sure that we don't have unnecessary entities in there, and I would take the staff recommendation. Move that we take the staff recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
2018, 2019, Fifth Program Year Annual Action Plan Funding Recommendations.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. Mark Stanbury for the Housing and Community Services Department. This morning, we are seeking your approval of funding allocations in connection with the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan for the city's entitlement grant programs. We are also seeking your approval to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Some brief background, the city receives an annual allocation of funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, funded activities aligned with the city's goal of creating a livable and sustainable community. Funds are used to create strong, sustainable, inclusive communities and affordable housing. The entitlement grants include the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is used to address a range of community development needs. The 2018-19 award amount is, uh, $2,800,000 approximately. It's an increase of $250,000 over last year. The Home Investment Partnerships Program is used to create affordable housing for low-income households. Our grant amount for the coming year will be approximately 1.5 million. This is an increase of $400,000 over the previous year. Emergency Solutions Grant is used to address homelessness. The 2018-19 award is approximately $230,000, a slight decrease from last year, about $11,000. Components of our planning process are the Consolidated Plan. This is a five-year plan to identify the community needs and spending priorities for CDBG, home, and ESG funds. The Program Year Annual Action Plan, which we are discussing today, allocates funding amounts for specified activities. The Fifth Program Year Action Plan for 2018-2019 is due to HUD on June 29th, 2018, and it allocates funds for the period from July 1, 2018, through June 30th, 2019. CDBG funding must meet a national objective, which includes, uh, benefit to low, moderate income, prevent slums or blight, and to address urgent community needs. Has to be used for eligible spending activities, and not less of, than 70% of the spending must benefit low-to-moderate income persons. So we stated before, the 2018-19 allocation is 2.8 million. Our proposed plan allocates 4.7 million dollars approximately for eligible activities during 2018-19. This amount includes, uh, approximately $2 million from prior year resources, such as program income, recaptured funds in Section 108 loan repayments. First off, we have $100,000 allocated for the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. This is for demolition and clearance of properties cited by MABCD staff. Uh, $100,000 here, and these would have to be approved by council. For our housing activities, we have a total of approximately $3 million allocated. This includes our home repair program for, uh, $1,140,000. Also, the code enforcement and compliance liaison with MABCD for 67129. We also have, uh, public housing rehabilitation activities for $1,600,000, and, uh, also an acquisition and development activity for affordable housing for $200,523. For administration, we have $561,000 allocated. Uh, this includes our program management, indirect costs, and mandated cul, consolidated plan activities. The Grants Review Committee, uh, reviewed proposals and applications received from community service providers interested in receiving CDBG, ESG, and home funds. For CDBG, this would include the Domestic Violence Shelter Services, and also, uh, uh, youth crime enrichment activities, and, uh, also the Emergency Solutions Grant, uh, activities undertaken by the homeless shelters, and, uh, also home funds for activities to be carried out by community housing development organizations. The GRC conducted a public hearing, uh, regarding proposals and applications on February 15th, 2018, and made selection and funding recommendations. For public services, our total allocation will be $1,117,807. This includes, uh, funding for the Office of Community Services, the Housing First Coordinator for the Housing First Program, Domestic Violence Shelter Services, Youth Crime Prevention and Enrichment, and also summer youth employment. Total allocated for Domestic Violence Shelter Services is $250,000. This is allocated between Catholic Charities, Harbor House, Stepstone, and also the Wichita Family Crisis Center. Total allocated for youth services is $214,307, which includes funding for the YMCA Middle School After-School Program, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and also the Mental Health Association. We also have, uh, the Say Yes Program, uh, included in the allocations for $30,000 to provide summer youth enrichment services. CDBG youth employment, we have $200,000 allocated. Uh, the 2018-19 allocation for this will be utilized during the summer of 2019. The Way to Work Summer Youth Program, uh, that is currently underway, is being implemented with the 2017-2018 allocation. For the home program, we have a total of $1,539,177 allocated, including program income. This includes CHODO operating funds and CHODO set-aside, our homeownership AD program, homebuyer assistance program, also what we call our boarded-up house program for redevelopment of, uh, blighted, uh, structures with single-family homes, and also the Housing Development Loan Program, the acquisition and development activity I mentioned before. This would be utilized, uh, in accordance with the city's comprehensive housing policy. Uh, the program administration indirect charges item is $149,000. The home CHODO set-aside activity, we have $300,000 allocated. The GRC recommended, uh, to fund Power CDC for development of its final home in the Millard Creek subdivision, and, uh, also voted to leave the balance of CHODO set-aside funding to be allocated during the program year. For Emergency Solutions Grant, uh, the continuum of care is administered by the United Way of the Plains. Continuum of care... Continuum of Care, reviewed proposals from community services providers interested in receiving ESG funds for homeless assistance and prevention programs. They participated in the public hearing regarding proposals and applications on February 15, and made selections, selection and funding recommendations to the Grants Review Committee. So for ESG, our total allocation is $230,074, this includes homeless assistance activities, also our homeless prevention activities, rapid rehousing, funding for the United Way for the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, and also program administration and For shelter support, there's a total of $135,628 allocated for Harbor House, St. Anthony Family Shelter, Interfaith Inn, Interfaith Warming Souls, Winter Shelter, also the Salvation Army, the Homeless Resource Center, UMD, the Open Door Resource Center, and the Wichita Women's Crisis Center as well. The funding was reduced from last year, it was proposed to be level, we just made across-the-board reductions based on the percentage reduction in the total grant. Total allocated for prevention activities is $38,146 between Center of Hope and also the Salvation Army homeless services. Before we go through the recommended action, I would like to state that we did publish the plan for 30 days, we put notices of publication in the Wichita Eagle two times, and also once in the Community Voice. So with that, we're asking you to close the public hearing, approve the funding recommendations, authorize the submission of the annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and allow the necessary funding agreements and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the counts on this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing, approve the funding recommendations, authorize the submission of the annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize all necessary funding agreements and signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Grant application for I-135-K96, K-254-I-235, North Junction Interchange.
Morning, Mayor, councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is a proposed grant application for the I-135, 235, K-96, and K-254 interchange improvements. It would be a lot easier for me to refer to this as the North Junction going forward, which I'm sure you're familiar with. As you know, I want to talk a little bit about on this display about what's been done to this point and where we're at. The North Junction is a vital part of the metro area's transportation network, it provides a critical connection between two interstate and two-state highway systems. The facility was built just over 50 years ago, but it can no longer safely or effectively accommodate current traffic demands, especially with an increase in freight travel. The interchange carries almost 100,000 vehicles a day at present time, with future projected counts in excess of 160,000 vehicles, which would include 16,000 trucks per day. To give you a little bit of idea where the Kansas Department of Transportation is on multiple parts of this project, if you see the green part to the west of the interchange, that project, the green project, is set to be bid in January of 2019 with federal funds through KDOT. That will not have a direct impact on the current problems we see at the North Interchange, but will be a good start to work in the area. It will provide what is needed if and when we get to the point of construction on the North Interchange to accommodate traffic. There's a lot of issues with current infrastructure right now, including the bridges over the little Arkansas River that need to be replaced. I want to mention real quick on, something I'll get to in just a bit, is looking at a grant application, one of the critical parts to that is providing a local match, showing that there's non-federal revenue that would be a part of a project. As that project is federal funding, I specifically asked KDOT if there's a chance that could be considered a local match, and it can't because it is federal funding. However, they still recommend that it be a big part of what goes into the grant application as doing something in the area, getting a start on what we need to do, and being a big part of the process. If you see the gold and the orange have been combined into one project, that project by itself would take care of the majority of the problems. It would do effectively what's been done at Kellogg and 235, providing a northbound-to-westbound flyover, and then providing some relief for what would be southbound-to-eastbound, that connection to K-96. I think you're all familiar with the area, see those problems in the morning, and the northbound, you see the problems in the evening. Status of that with KDOT right now is they have a contract with professional engineering consultants here in Wichita to complete field check level design, that's developing plans to 50%, but that's all they have at this point. There's no further funding identified to finish design, to start purchasing right-of-way, or anything for construction. In May, the governor signed legislation, developed a transportation task force that I think many of you are probably aware of, with multiple members. The goal is to develop a project list and potential funding source across the state to hopefully develop a new state highway transportation bill similar to T-Worx. We know that there were 23 projects, estimated at $500 million, that are still in line for the next highway transportation bill that did not get funded by T-Worx. KDOT has advised those projects most likely will be the first ones of. Not knowing what a funding package looks like, T-Worx itself was almost $8 billion, so if there's anything to that level, $500 million is only a small part of that. We've spent quite a bit of time talking to KDOT about the plan that I am discussing with you today, and trying to find some way to start moving forward, because otherwise, KDOT's current plan does nothing but get to 50% design, and it does not move on from there. We think as a reason that we need to find a way to start looking forward, to do something, to start moving this project forward, and looking at other funding sources. We're going to be a big part of that task force and what happens going forward. They're going to have eight meetings across the state, what they've called local consults in the past, where they look to get local and regional input on important projects. KDOT has told us they believe this is a very important project, when you look at it across the state, all of the needs and all of the priorities, and we think it could be in a good spot at some point if state funding is ever identified, but right now, that's really an unknown, and not sure if and when that could happen. The recommendation before you today is we're looking at this being a joint effort between the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County, obviously this interchange has a big impact on the county also. Currently, the U.S. Department of Transportation has a build transportation program out, notice of funding opportunity, $1.5 billion total in projects, it's a $25 million max for any individual project. This is formerly the Tiger Grant. Next slide, I want to show you what the 2017 awards look like, it's kind of an interesting distribution across the country, they have a real desire to spread this out and talk specifically about some of the projects. There is a July 19 deadline for this grant application, which we think we can make happen, but it would require your approval today if we're going to be able to meet that deadline, and I'll talk more about that here in just a minute. Want to highlight some of the evaluation criteria, and a lot of these, I think, we can do really well on and stand a chance to be competitive. That's safety, quality of life, environmental protection, innovation, partnership. We plan on Kansas Department of Transportation being a big partner in this endeavor. I have asked them to be a co-sponsor of this application and have not heard back. The Unified Government of YN County currently has an application for infra funds, they're expecting to hear back on any day, but KDOT applied as a co-applicant, and so I've asked them to do the same here in support of this, since this is currently a state-of-Kansas project, we're just trying to see if we can do something to move it along. Two other items I want to mention that are part of this application that are going to be, one in particular is going to be a little bit more of a challenge, and that's the additional non-federal revenue that I talked about. You always stand a better chance with these type of applications, the more local matches that you have. City does not have funding earmarked at this point for this project, nor does Sedgwick County, and I certainly don't mean to speak for any of you, but we'd like to look at this as a partnership between the city, county, and the state, that hopefully we could come up with a local match to enhance our chances to be able to get federal funds. Typically, in the past, that's been a 20% match on most of the federal funds that we look at, I would expect to be that that's where we start within this grant application. Just so you know, the YN County infra application I mentioned, that is a 50/50 split, they have a lot of local partnership and private enterprise that is contributing to that. The more you can put in, probably the better your chances are, but that's not required, and that's not necessarily guaranteed. The other part of that is project readiness, which is really as critical as anything today in what I'm asking you to consider. Project needs to move forward, as I mentioned, it's only going to get to a certain point in absence of doing something else. One of the biggest things that you can do on these types of projects is start acquiring right-of-way. There is some right-of-way that's needed for constructing the interchange, it's not, I wouldn't consider it significant, in what we've looked at on past freeway projects, including on Kellogg, there are some full acquisitions, there are some partial acquisitions, we think one of the best things we can do to help move things forward, to show that we are ready to move on this project, to show that we want to do something here at the federal level, especially, is start acquiring right-of-way, so I'll talk about that more in a minute. You've all heard about trying to get the shovel ready, and that's the only way that we can do that and meet any timing guidelines. So I want to show you real quick what this map looks like on the 2017 Tiger Awards. You can see it's a pretty broad distribution all the way across the country, and they have a desire typically to do that and to spread the money out. There were none in Kansas, I don't even know if there was any applications. There were 41 projects awarded across 44 states, several projects were multi-state, the awards ranged from $2 million to $25 million. So one of the things that we've talked about, Mr. Mayor, I've heard you mention it, when you all went to Washington, DC and talked to Department of Transportation, I visited with the manager about it, is that there's an emphasis to provide funding to rural areas. We had a belief at one time that Wichita was considered a rural area, most of Kansas is. Currently, as it stands, and there is some belief that this could still be up for debate, Wichita is within the urbanized area boundary, which technically says we are not rural when it comes to consideration for these types of grants. We do not believe that that rules us out, and that should stop us from applying, but I will tell you, in the 2017 awards, 27 of 41 projects awarded were awarded to rural areas. I've looked at some of the awards, and I would tell you that I contend where some of that was awarded, there's areas that are just as big as Wichita that got funding that were considered rural, so we're hoping that maybe that doesn't specifically apply moving forward based on what we've looked at on the urbanized map, but I can't promise you the way on that. There is a, I noticed more focus on freight and highway improvements than in the past on these Tiger projects, a lot of the projects, multiple projects looked at making improvements to highway sections like we're looking at here, interstate connections from system to system, so that's a good thing. I apologize, let me go back here. So looking at our proposed plan, before you today, the first item is a build grant application, and visiting with KDOT over time, they highly recommended that we hire out help to get this done, it's a pretty arduous process. PEC is designing the project for KDOT, we have a lot of experience with them, they have experience with grant applications of this sort, HNTB is a sub to them, they have considerable experience with this, that was one of the first firms that KDOT recommended, so we think it's a good team. The approximate cost, that fee, one of the things we're asking for approval today is $86,000, and I'll come back to that. I mentioned looking at acquiring right-of-way, we would need professional services help with that, also would recommend at a later time, not today, but if something would have to happen soon, that we come back to hire PEC also, and that contract would be less than $50,000. This is the best commitment we think that we can make right now to two things, one is towards that financial commitment, the other is project readiness, and without this, we don't stand a chance at any point in time for any future grant applications. To make this happen, we are recommending that the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County both contribute $500,000. That total $1 million of funding would go towards the professional services contracts that you see, and then to start acquiring right-of-way. It's a really good faith effort to start making something happen here, and it gets us going in the right direction. We would recommend that the city take the lead on this as project managers, this is something we do quite often, especially on the Kellogg Freeway work. All of this would require approval by the Board of County Commissioners, who I spoke to last Thursday, I was invited to their informal meeting to help answer questions about this. We had some general discussion, talked about some of the things I've talked to you today. I left that meeting, and Chairman Dennis provided the comment that he would be anxious to see what the city council is going to do today. Sedgwick County staff believes that they can get this before the commissioners, hopefully on June 27, no later than July 10. We do not intend that at all that we would have any right-of-way acquired by the application deadline of July 19, assuming your approval today, but we can show that we are moving in that direction, and during the period of time that it takes for the grant awards, and even to the point of needing to obligate money, we would be moving forward on that. The last part of this, then, would be applying for infra funds, which we expect to notice a funding opportunity yet this fall. The 2017 infra program, the awards are expected this month, and based on last year, assuming the funding is still there, we would expect an application late this fall. I wish, I don't know what our chances are with this build grant application, I can tell you there's some challenges, just like it is for anybody. I think it's necessary that we do this to be in a spot, to give it a try, to start moving things forward, in absence of this, nothing happens at all. If we are not successful, I'm confident this puts us even in a better spot to apply for infra funds. KDOT and United States Department of Transportation, along with, I spoke with Jim Davenport, a federal lobbyist, all recommend applying for both grants, they say there's no problem stacking them, and they believe there's always a chance that you could get awarded both, but I want to remind you that at some point in time, there still has to be a local match for those, so. With that, the initial cost to cover the professional services fee for PEC for submittal of the build grant application is $86,000. We would propose that the city cover that cost right now and request reimbursement for Sedgwick County for half of that final cost. Staff recommends the city council authorize application for the build grant and hire PEC to prepare the grant application. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions at this point? And I don't know, Vice Mayor, did you get a chance to visit with the county last week about their participation?
Unfortunately, no.
So hopefully, we can have that discussion, I don't know where that discussion stands at this point, but we'll go out to the audience, anyone like to address the counts on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench, and this is obviously an important project, we appreciate that the depth that Mr. Janson took with this item. It's critically important to the whole region, and that's why I think it's important for us to team with the county. Councilmember Clint Dennis?
Gary, hoping you didn't address this, but maybe you did, but any amount of money that we put into acquiring property at all, does that go toward our match?
Yes, sir, it should, yes. Anything that's contributed at this point, and I apologize if that wasn't clear, but like I said, it kind of helps us on two fronts, one is starting somewhere on our local match, and the other is getting the project, moving to a point of project readiness, being more shovel-ready.
So even though the project hasn't been awarded anything, we haven't even applied, these monies can still be considered?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If there's no other...
And that would remain the same, sorry, going forward with any grant applications in the future regardless of the timing.
Perfect.
No other comments or questions, I move that we take the staff recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion, cast your vote. Any further discussion, cast your vote. Let's go ahead and give Councilmember Blue Ball an opportunity to cast his vote. If you can go back, Madam Secretary, so Councilmember Blue Ball can record. You want to just do a voice vote there, cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Change in council meeting schedule.
I don't know that we need a staff report, but Gary could probably come back up and talk about it for a half hour. It's fairly simple. We're, we're working our way through the holiday season, and we think it's better to hold a full meeting on the 26th instead of just a consent meeting, and that way we can move the whatever was scheduled for the 3rd's over, so I guess it does take a council action. I thought the mayor had the prerogative to move in council meetings and set dates for council meetings without the action of a council, but obviously, that's not the case.
Sometimes the mayor may call special meetings through a notice. This is changing the voted-on council schedule, so it's a little bit different. It's a cancellation of a meeting and changing, so.
All right. I move that we take the action of canceling July 3 and moving the 26th to a full meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, cast your vote.
We can't have both meetings.
Stop. Madam Clerk, next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Any appointments or comments today? We wore you down. All right.
Well, there is, Mayor, the Wichita Open is this weekend.
Absolutely.
Fantastic impact on the city and the region, and provides, I think I heard, $200,000 to $300,000 in local nonprofit charity funding as a result, and it's just a fantastic event. If anybody can, can attend, it's four days of sun.
Wasn't, wasn't the number 6.3 million yesterday that they said was the economic impact of Wichita?
Right.
Yeah. $6.3 million impact. So, yeah, thanks for bringing attention to that. I wasn't, I was hesitant understanding because Councilmember Blue Ball's team took second place yesterday.
We asked for an audit of the scorecard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wish I would have had more contribution to that, but I took the trophy anyway.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to recognize this week is Juneteenth. Celebration over at Mac Adams every day. Tonight is a youth play. The young people have been rehearsing for the last several weeks, so should be a great time over at Mac Adams, and then this weekend, of course, is the parade and all-day celebration on Saturday.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson. If there's no other appoint, no appointments today, I would move to adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
We have motion to adjourn and a second. Any discussion, cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0.